Please do the flag in our state of America and to the government from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. One of the soundings for the sick handicapped and the military personnel is good.
Do you have any questions?
Here.
Do you have any questions?
Here.
Can you help us with anything?
Yeah.
Thank you, Charles Smith.
Here.
Don't push me.
Here.
Do you have anything?
Yes.
You know what I am?
Here.
You want to talk about it?
Here.
Since the promise of permanent?
Here.
And you know the site?
Here.
Running in the morning?
Here.
Is it checking?
Here.
That you can help check it. It's actually beautiful. It's also the state of our country. Thank you.
We'll call him. I mean, I'm sorry. Mary Weiss, please.
You all know me, but I'll put it in the record. I'm Mary, but I was going to go to the Chappelle, to the Furchill. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Virtual Superior Society. Wondering if the status of the committee regarding your sidewalks is going to fall into place? And if so, under my meeting, I need to advise the board as well as our solicitors about our manual.
I don't know. I talked to Bill Harrison. Me and him are going to know if maybe we can have the conversation. We'll see. But we're going to pay. And he had Phil's arrange for Tommy to meet.
Yes, as soon as.
He's away this week. I'm going to be tomorrow morning. But maybe next week.
The main reason I ask you also is that there is a direct descendant of C. Eric Junior. And I would like to let her know that's a name of mine. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Frank and C. Simon.
And for question? You're putting some video tape?
I don't know.
Fine. Anywhere? Is there news on the internet?
Yeah, on YouTube.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate that because I think the work is, you know, already that you can't even even know what happens here. My husband and I are here today. You guys were present this morning. Personally, I would like to ask you about the solution to the flooding issue of Baldwin Street. That's two months ago. The council mentioned that they were going to work on this. And I saw that over the day, there was more progress. Are we closer?
Now, we've been working on this month. And now we're, we're dropping the manhole.
Yeah.
Call for it.
Another thing is, of course, we are going to be caring to clean the sanitary sewer line. And that's part of the part of the journey. And since we've done that, we've got no, we've got no basement flooding without the manhole. I mean, something may happen with the water. And we've done a lot of what we have in my community calls regarding that. All sudden, our appointment here, Marjorie, we're going to be dropping the manhole and the call for. And right now, it's an obstruction. So that that's going to be happening. Another thing, we finally, I received it in the mail today, but we found out that we've got approval of the water pollution system is going to be finally addressed. That will judge some of the debris coming out through the water. Great. So that we can, and our department's part where we put an area down, parents are probably getting the issue down there, snatch that out, and then we can order these down next to the borough. So we're making some progress for letting that. But that is, you definitely need solutions. We are, as we're in the middle of the week, the road is going to be attached after St. Clair. It'll be sending a street. But that's only going to make the problem worse. It's a shame that the borough has to continue cleaning out these areas to, you know, to create ones for other communities. But that's the situation.
That's a tragic. Trash.
Yeah.
For a while, we're on the shower. I'm like, how do you find it?
The flood control authority, actually, the executive board, the executive committee of the flood control authority, we have been meeting for the past four months now. For a while, the flood control authority was kind of low. And the executive board has been meeting. There are some army workbench here, issues that they've been taking care of. And there will be a general session meeting. I do believe.
It's hard to talk about having here this summer, but the determination has made it to make people the orientation. So it'll probably be laid off just around September when we have the general membership.
And that general meeting is for the public. And it's also for the, for the delegates. If, if the public can't get, can't come, the delegates never win, never win the point of it. It is a problem. The executive board meeting are just, are just the individuals that's on the, on the control. Who's in charge of the flood control?
Gentlemen, I'm afraid they have the IG to be telling.
Is he new?
No, he's been, he's been over the chair for 20 plus years.
But he's not really doing it back to us.
No, he is.
Probably with the, we have flooding issues that aren't going away. So that's.
We have the flooding issues.
The flooding issues that aren't going away are, and we go up the judiciary. And the charter zone flood authority does not let the authority to come into the local judiciary. So we try to be a law. That's what, what, why we want in the ICA Corps to come in and take a look at it. Because you have to apply that way to add that. Of which.
Right.
In my report, I have received an indication from the act of what's going to be on the board that, that, that they did, you know, that I can't be, or tell them, say, this is a federal government, that it doesn't matter. And, 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 and. But that's, 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 that's got to be a way to have that tributary added to some things that the.
That'd be a frustration.
That would be wonderful.
I was okay on the law. And they all be. Right. But like now.
Oakdale and North Fayetteville, Washington. They were hit in their business district, the police office was, and everything was. None of the communities had the criteria for the, for the act that went by study. They came back, they sent us the letter, and now they say we want to start with some other programs. So we're going to have to start again. And that's just the way it goes. We didn't, we kind of, we didn't, made the criteria for that program. So we've got, you know, they're saying there's a program that we want you to try. So we of course are going to do that. But we just got the notification. I think I got it on Friday. And if I look forward. They, they took a look at potential flood risk reduction and alternatives and analyzed them. Structure buyouts, which would be opportunity for the structures on, say, Baldwin Street that determined that they didn't want to look at us anymore. The guy who got called with buyout listings, channel equipment, and resists. And none of these all, they, what they determined, and this is how these programs work, is none of these alternatives could be ever normally justified. Under section two of the law, continue to order a program. Therefore, they're not able to justify the overall participation and flood risk addition of projects from the communities. That being said, this program is a high risk of, of, of risk funding. But there's another program called the CAT program. And that's one we have to, we'll get access. That's one we said in the information notes that we will continue. You know, as they turn us down, we will continue to, we will find for things. But in the meantime, we maintain sanitary sewer line, which is a big help. That column, the lower end, that column will be a help. Traffic will be a help. So we're into. And I appreciate that. That's a lot of effort and a lot of funding that comes from taxpayers. It's getting a solving problem that comes from somewhere else. We have to find a solution. And I could appreciate the diligence and that, and that. The next thing I wanted to ask about was the, if you heard all of the BPs complaining against West Penn not trimming the trees on Mill Street. And before you answer that question, the other question that I have is, other communities where the utilities play, not it, and nobody turns the trees around the poles, is there a possibility of, either trimming the trees or saying to the homeowners, hey, we got to fix this. We got to fix this because there's five streets that were affected by a 24-hour outage. And, you know, that's, and there's still all those trees and all that debris that could, you know, could cause a violent storm. So, you know, who, who fixes that? We can't, we're probably not reinventing wheel, I'm sure, other municipalities. We're not. And if, it was a learning experience for us as far as, you know, we knew West Penn called our petting program. It's true. So I'm sharing. Right. Right. They say every five years. Well, well, you know, after, after we told them, we are responsible, we involved, we were on, so we called the PUC. And then we were greatly educated by our solicitor as to what really happens with these lines and those responsibilities. And we may be able to file a complaint with the PUC, but it is not for what we fought. So I think I'm going to affirm that to you again.
Thanks, Mary. Generally, trees, you have to fix them like worry and manage. They cause all the time to fix them. Like the trees and folks find yards, or over sewerways anyway, okay? Talk last, but when the trees are in good shape, we get others to maintain them. But when they do, they call the solicitor, they say, can you take time? You were. They're trying. The fact of the matter is that the tree, whether it's in the right way, it might be owned by, we try, the burrow does not own those trees and it has no management responsibility. Frankly, I don't know, we live in a spread of public funds to take down, drive the trees without leaning folks on those properties. There are also a lot of utilities, trees, the utilities have a little obligation to cut down trees. In fact, from my understanding, when the utilities come through, most of the year, and folks are complaining about big feet cuts and hacking with these trees. And people, the complaints there are that they're not being generous enough, right? When they're cutting trees, not to be cut. When the utilities come in to cut the trees, they're exercising self-help. Because they have a right to exclude things that interfere with their power lines. Sure, the burrow actually has a right. These penalties do have a right to exclude things from their airspace, from their racing way. So the burrow does have the power to exclude trees from its roof, racing way, altogether, or to require the owners to pause that. We have no power to make the utility, or I do like the PUC does. I can say, right, they have power to make the utility cut down. But this tree owned by the adjacent landowner. And with that apart, yes, those two cases will get that, send to the service. What's happened is we spent a couple of decades to do that, you know, shade finishes. We, we went about this for a few decades of policy, that we purposely built streams over street rights of way and over sewers. This is coming back. The opponent is, I'm not having these trees to manate over houses and streets. At the same time, I'm careful with the research. We started sending out, because this is ultimately is a, a, a real responsibility, correct? So if you start policing that, then that has consequences as well. The ocean will fall on the pocket of the city. We need to protect the trees out. If there are trees that danger stay on land, the roads stay, and then you do that. And that's something that may need to be. And then some of the communities not happy, they split the baby. Who knew we had a right to totally, to require them to totally exclude your trees from our airspace? And one community that put them on private, or, it's, you want to take that with the danger without. So then the success, we had Marlowe's entire ID residence and having given him a good ring. But we were confident, taking his opinion as to whether the tree indeed was going to pose on this particular tree, whether it's sick. So for example, I mean, we have some trees worth crap that can treat itself. The brain is going to be allowed to be crossed the road. That's that. If there's precarious kids that are falling in public safety laws, it has to do with the snakes. Where the authorities have served us by, you know, he felt that he could move over airspace from empty trees that grow in a special angle, that he is a professional, he is not a danger. We then, we, by we, we really, 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 completely, completely, we want to, to, we're going to exercise prosecutorial discretion, I guess, and, and kind of to make the original user leave satisfaction himself. But you're asking, but that, what that, what's it, what's it, that is, in working on, probably that, for two months, three months, four months, trees.
A tree that needs to be.
Yeah. We should have saw the worst case scenario, and they were down. So what I'm saying, everything they're saying, we obviously have to follow. You know, fire that you're not been committing with, sitting there for next to forever.
Really? And it's only a specific part of.
And also the residents, again, going to, when Mr. Fettis, Charlie's family, they're able to make happen. That you never seen your citizens.
When the neighbor.
Did he make that happen?
Well, some, I don't know, someone made it happen, but that.
I think you just alleged that he did. You said he made it happen. Didn't make anything happen. But a tree fell down, hold on. A tree fell down on a car. There was no injuries, but then I want to call to, to pronounce it. The fire department responded to it. On Mill Street.
No, then you all. Missouri.
No, hold on, no. Just go. Kind of nice thing.
Sure.
The fire department responded to it. And there was another nine one one called on Missouri. Or structural fire. There was no injuries in the car, no headlights were in danger, there was a house, it was called into a structural fire. And it wasn't, when they got there, it wasn't a fire, but there was a tree down and the wires were getting ready to pop. And if they could, they could have started a fire. It was a healthy person inside. And they tended to that person. It had nothing to do with Mr. Fettis. And I don't know, where are you, I mean, if anything, pretty much. Wait, hold on, hold on. Well, no, you just said something.
He's, he's made it. So last month.
Relax, you need to.
He had something to do with it. I apologize.
He never knew. It just happened he lied. I mean, if anything, I mean, if, I don't know if you know who the chief of, or fire chief is and where he's from. He's from your neighborhood. If anything, he has many, many more people that he's friends with, dear friends within your neighborhood. He wasn't my favorite, uh, nephew. And that also would have been helpful when the issue came up at the last meeting. Someone would have elucidated on that. Because nobody said that there was a fire.
Yeah, I actually, I had the fire chief, I actually said.
So if you think we went down a road, you might be because of lack of information.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate your thanks.
Put out an accusation at that point?
I'll tell you what happened. I'll be.
Because of lack of information?
I mean, can I tell you? I mean, can I tell you?
No, we didn't go down that session. We said, it was a neighbor that was. I didn't say you made it. And I said, it was the neighbor.
The wind was very strong.
Yeah, it was very strong.
I was sitting with my, catching my pajama and relaxing. I, I see, I go over the place. My neighbors come on, I was the last one coming out. And my neighbor give me hell. You the only one, you shouldn't be there first.
Yeah.
I'm the mother, every member of the white.
No, we. Whatever happened, you, there's no.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that. But there is an issue with, with my neighborhood feeling like, oh, you don't matter to this council. And, you know, we know that, that the road's going to be added. There, there are more kids that live in those apartments on the other side of the avenue across the running streets. That's going to be an issue. But there's also one last thing. There's one last thing I wanted to ask about. And I asked about this in previous meeting, and nothing's happened. And, you know, part of paying your mortgage, or being a good neighbor, or being a part of the community, is not only to, be, live in a great place to raise kids, but it's also to keep your property, you know, you want. And, you know, we live down the street from Mr. Donalucci's establishment. And I know that there's been an issue of vehicles before. And I don't understand, I know that there are laws, all the books, the borough ordinances about vehicles that are physically on the street that not expired. And apparently, that, we were just there, there are four parts total there on Mill Street that have expired tags, they expired plates, they're buttoned up against each other so you can't see one of the tags on, 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 on one of those pairs of vehicles. And they're on the public street. They're not on the business, they're on the public street. There's also some vehicles that are behind the old auto shop. There's some vehicles on the, the concrete parking pad, and then build it across the street on the Lockwood Road. And there are a lot of vehicles that stayed on the gas, the old gas station property that, you know, architect.
The old gas station.
Donalucci's service station. And I.
The old gas station is a regular gas station.
There's no gas.
Yes, there is.
There is, they pump gas.
Oh, they do. I don't think, yeah.
Get your bills, get your backstrings. Oh, thank you.
Your help. Well, I, you know, there's never been a sign that says your mind has here.
It says, self-serve, right there. And if you can't read it, then maybe you need to.
You better, you better flip while you're in it, because you're putting out information in so many different ways. It's a. How about the expired tags on roads? That's my business. That's what I do.
That's a public street.
That's, that's what I do.
That's a public street. Why?
That's, that's my business. I, if you want me to put, I have 14 plate, plates. I can put the tags on them as long. That's my business. That's what I deal with every day. And for the last 75 years, that's what we've dealt with. And I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate you two with your comments. But not the carburetor across the lane. Why can't we all have jumpers on the street without plates? Why? It's not your business. It's not your business. My business is cars. That's my business. You've been there for 75 years, and you're telling me all about the burden, and that's your business. I don't know about my history of the property, about the shorty business. And frankly, the folks raised questions. Both people, which lasted, if you have to doubt it, like the shorty.
But they have.
But it's not as easy as, I don't know anything about the history of the gathering, which is what I will. But there are, yes, about, hey, I'll let this one out, but that. I know he just said, right, on screen, he was not running that business for 75 years, okay? And by the way, I will refute this completely and outside of that, okay? Yeah. But there's things about grandfather, this is what, if his business, they involve some of the history, actually started down there before, so he didn't exist. Okay? So he may have his business, or may not, serving the grandfather of rights down there. And there are times when you may be able to, someone, your father, that you next door in the camp, because he started doing it before they changed the rules, and so they started to kill. And that person has a right to continue that for ever, actually. And as opposed to, to the right, the call was transparent, we strongly attacked on the potential basis, or just, gosh, on a potential basis, but we're strongly attacked grandfather, not in the following uses. I'm not making an admission or a statement, I know that that's the situation, which is, I'm saying that may be the worst situation. So I will believe.
I mean, I apologize, because no one said before that they would review the situation. We promised. Now, you are here. We had a different lawyer here before. And we asked, and no one gave us answers, and we worked whole, you know, we were, we were, we've lived up the street from there for 18 years, and we don't like the way it's continuing down the hill.
It hasn't gone down there. It hasn't changed in the last 20 years. It's been the exact same thing. Why should we let our business do? Why should I change because you don't like it? Why should I change? Why should I change because you two don't like it? Really? Yeah. You're, you're sitting on council, and. I'm asking you. No. I'm asking you. What? I'm answering you. Just think of, as general practice, to put jumpers on the street. I know your solicitor. No, no, wait, no, wait. Why, why do you consider them jumpers?
Because they haven't moved in.
Because they're.
They're, they're, they're scared, and they haven't moved.
Tell them times in his business, people were there, cars down, and when you tell them it's going to be 800 dollars, they leave them there. Now, he's, he's going to get the tiles, he has to wait to ruin it to stain. He's a one of the people. And that's what I say, he has cars down there, you don't have the tiles, where he can.
So is, is the gas station?
The gas station's always.
Is the gas station allowed to have junk vehicles, like the junkyard property of Alden Street, the junkyard property on the water?
It's not a junkyard. Very, very not, depending upon the history of how the Jesus came to be.
Okay. And then my last question, the, the house that's on the junkyard property of Alden Street that is not in good repair, is how to.
It was, it was damaged during the floods, and we're trying to determine what we're going to do with it. It's in my name and my father's name. My dad, who's 85 and started with Alzheimer's, we haven't decided what we're going to do. He's not living it, right?
Well, that's good. I really, I do, I do hope that some of it becomes more neighborly.
So do I. I, I like the make of the blind spigot, and take care of it.
That would be nice. That would be nice. You care about the name, because like Friday night, I was curling, and my mother really thought, and how many were showering, and you drunk down a alley.
Yeah, because I picked, I was picking one of my guys, I was drunk.
Well, that's nice. But, you know, as you can see, we all maintain our properties, and we don't do that because we're snowy. We do that because we want to live in a neighborhood, that's all.
We have six, we have six pieces of property that we maintain. And you start talking, you talk, you talk.
I do thank you for your time.
I would, I would, although on the, on the board, it's not, it's not. It sounds like they sent a very nice letter saying, we're doing nothing.
Everybody will get a copy of that letter. I got it made on the floor.
No, no, I'm sure you'll send that out. What I'm going to ask you to do is a little difficult, which is to get from the board in here, the basis of their decisions. Okay? Because I think that there might be interesting information in there that we can utilize. And I know that's going to be a little bit more work for you, but I appreciate it. Because I know that everyone else.
Generally, the big help, he's very, and, and he, you know, he wasn't happy to give us that tip. And I'm sure he'll, he'll be, you know, he explained, it didn't meet the criteria, but I'm sure he'd explain to me a little, how, why it didn't.
They have documentation.
Right.
For why it didn't.
Right.
Which I think that documentation is going to provide us with information that we would have to pay a lot of money if they get. And so that engineering, I, I use the word engineer a little. Usually, this question is, how, that information, I think, would be very valuable as we proceed forward, with, with the CAT program. And with our public efforts in this resolve, we are.
All right.
I 100% support trying to get the federal government, and the state government, dah, dah, dah. But I don't hold out much hope for it. And I believe we need to work on this problem within our.
I was actually helping more.
So is I.
When we, when we met with the communities, all, all grand, you know, the time, and it was like.
It was nine communities that they told no to. And some of which had very significant problems.
Some of them had, had a lot worse problems than we did, and they didn't meet the criteria.
So I feel very, I think we all get misery without bad to feel about being turned down with this.
Yes, really.
It was bad.
It was very, very messy.
One more, like, yes, just like, our county council, you know, Sulee is, is joining us, like, just like, recognizing certain things, and.
I just wanted to come and take a look, and give my mouth to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bob Fryer, yes, thanks again to, to, to. Excuse me, uh, this is primarily, uh, what I consider the single list of corporate issue, uh, Bridgeville residents and officials. That's solving the traffic research problem, which means the project that the traffic pass forces working on is essential, or it has to be, that, right? Uh, last week, I sent a letter to Lori asking her if I could get a copy of the, uh, Tass Force's, uh, most recent, uh, plan. And she, she got it to me before, but she had, uh, just, I think, sort of, but anyway. Uh, I, this is a copy of the plan. What I did, and, uh, as you can tell, uh, excuse me, I had an accent, uh, liar words, and so, but that's essentially the design. And I was, uh, I was concerned about certain features that weren't in the design, that are essential to Bridgeville. I've mentioned this period many times, or I'm sure you understand it. The Washington Pipe has been a two-lane road for two hundred years. The traffic congestion, and the area to a great extent, has resulted in there simply not being enough calls for traffic to be able to put more of the south of that quarter. And what I noticed, that disappointed me was, in the, this latest version of the, the Tass Force Plan, I understand it's a conceptual plan, but I think the conceptual plan is still. The, um, anyway, there's only one common traffic, it's able to move the South Bay Business District into Bridgeville. Likewise, there's only one three-lane coming from Bridgeville into the South Bay Business District. I, that's totally acceptable, and I realize, uh, I'm, to illustrate, uh, the gravity of that situation, what I did was, I took all the, all the lane that was, for the, all I did, by the way, I, I glued this section of the map up. It's exactly the same. If you notice, the two green areas are the meager single columns that allow consumer motorists to come from the South Bay, that's certain business district in Bridgeville. And the one area, one green area going that way allows Bridgeville Business District traffic to be evacuated. Uh, with, uh, this is a conceptual, conceptual plan, but I'd like to point out, uh, the traffic coming from New Route Fifty, both of these common stacking lines turn left at the same time, they go across the bridge. One lane turns right up, uh, Charter Street toward Upper Saint Clair. The other one goes straight ahead, and primarily, most of those people at that time, the rush hour, turn right up Station Street, also going up Saint Clair. Also, in the opposite direction, the attention of this seems to be focused on Upper Saint Clair, resident consumer motorists movement. Uh, we, I know I suggested putting, putting another lane on Charter Street, which is great, you know, you.
We did suggest that.
Or maybe, maybe you suggested that. About a year ago, we were writing three lines. But anyway, when I suggested adding another lane on Charter Street, uh, that was for the purpose of allowing two columns of traffic to move down Charter Street, turn left at the same time, and turn right onto, uh, New Route Fifty. Those aspects of the plan are fine, right? But what I'm concerned about is, even though this is a conceptual drawing, the double lanes coming from, uh, uh, South Bay into Bridgeville, I suppose.
First, you draw, just stop there, boy.
Yeah, go ahead.
These aren't conceptual drawings.
Yeah.
And that is not even, I mean, that's a drawing that you took and cut and pasted.
If your whole angle doesn't say that.
No, stop, stop.
If you're talking for the record, don't tell me I cut and pasted. This is the.
That is not, no, you have, like, stuff pasted, I mean, there's.
This is the exact.
Full coming up the same.
Gateway.
I know, hold on, hold on, just a second.
You'll be out in a few seconds, Scott.
Oh, go ahead. You, you're, you're gonna tell me I'm an actor?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, we're not gonna go there. Um, these are conceptual drawings.
That's right.
We, Mike Caperman from Gateway did the drawings. We are not going to sit there and tell him to redo the drawings now until we move forward, and get, and get a PennDOT's approval that, hey, this project's gonna move forward. We're not gonna sit here and spend money that Gateway put in features that may or may not work. Uh, we appreciate you, what, that you're saying right now, and, you know what, it might, it might, we might have to put an extra lane in there. So we might have to do something different. But we're not gonna sit there and just draw, and every time you have a whim, have our engineers bill us hours to do that.
Let's talk, you mentioned money, let's talk about money. Uh, Joe, Mike Caperman, to, for, anyway, we're on the back end, I believe is the traffic engineer for Gateway.
Yes.
Uh, Mike obviously put this together, uh, since Mike Caperman approached any some, any sources for funding, or applied for any funding, to do this exact version of the conceptual plan.
The conceptual plan that we had a call, with you on the call, we have last week, there have been multiple applications made for funding sources.
But not on board departments.
So not for the board.
Sorry.
So, you know, there's been money requested, uh, the, the, green light, you know, primary, there's also been money requested from the, uh, the, uh, the Gaming Fund, through the, uh, through the, uh, through the, uh, the County.
And that's for Charter Street.
Well, that would be the actual charter.
For Charter Street, and the reason being that, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
The reason being that the estimate for Charter Street is five hundred million thousand. And the Gaming Fund, you have to have a project, at least a five hundred thousand dollar project to apply. There's the CIDF fund, but it's a two hundred and fifty thousand, um, cap, or, I don't think so. But, but, yeah, but that's why we applied for that, just so that we may be able to get some funding for that side. And as far as the bridge, or anything coming up on the bridge, we have not applied for money for that, because none, none of that is at, at the stage where it's, is a final plan. As far as Charter Street goes, Charter Street is Charter Street, if you're gonna add a lane to it.
It's like, actually.
You have to do right now.
Okay, and actually, you know, actually, I mean, I talked, I've been talking with the developer Friday, and for probably six months. And he called me this morning, he said, "Yeah, I think it's best if you talk with my engineers." I talked with his engineer this morning, and we're gonna get together, and we're gonna discuss what we're gonna do to do at Charter Street, so we can move forward and obtain the required. Right away, we need to add that line. So that's moving forward, also, Joe, we're getting at this.
If you have someone that's looking around for funding sources to do this plan, why isn't the plan have, why isn't the plan have two columns, the estimates? Have two columns of consumers coming from South Bay to Bridgeville, or Bridgeville to South Bay? That's the way it's been for two hundred years. Mike mentioned this today. This is another plan that's been about the past numerous times, but this one was done by, uh, P V E.
Do you write, can you write the stuff?
No, I don't write, I'll, I make this point. Uh, this was done by P V E Schefter. This is about, and then this was ordered by your South Bay Council, the fast ones. It's interesting here.
It's Thomas.
That's fine, it's interesting where it is. This engineer has two lanes coming from South Bay going into Bridgeville. The one that, Joe, of Mike Caperman did is regression. Major concepts, my point is, yeah, it's regression. This adds two lanes, and the one that Gateway's on, uh, has one lane coming to Bridgeville and South Bay. And my point is, there's, with a, I mean, that's just one point. No, maybe, maybe that's not concerned about, especially as its leadings are closed. The mayor can't go, I can't go, none of the councilmen can go, apparently none of the commissioners in the South Bay can go either. Like, I'm concerned about what goes on in the meeting, okay? And I might mention, uh, a couple other things here. There's some other features that are on this that are essential. You have every morning or half of the day, the bridge, or the trip between Bridgeville and South Bay, for a mile and a half of traffic going all the way back past, uh, the stop in the, I guess it's Johnny Eagle House. These two left-turn stacking lanes, uh, beginning from McDonald's, that's good, and they turn, they turn left on the New Route Fifty at the same time. They only handle twenty-four cars. There's no way a two hundred and fifty-foot stacked stacking lane is gonna handle a mile and a half of traffic. I mean, you told me about studies, common sense, uh, at least at this concept, conceptual stage development. That concludes four lanes between Bridgeville and South Bay. I'd add this to it. This turn for the cars, for two columns of cars coming off, uh, New Route Fifty, turning left over the bridge, that's a fifteen mile an hour turn. However, the right turn of Charter Street is a five mile an hour turn. Every car has to hit its brakes to go around the right-hand turn, which is a traffic safety issue. That turn, likewise, has to be made the same radius as this turn. Thirdly, or fourthly, the other corner.
Before, before any of this.
Yeah.
It's move forward. It's gonna have to be approved.
What did you present the idea? How can they approve it from you guys who are touching the traffic court? Apparently, tell me, Mike, have you suggested any of the things that I just mentioned?
Yes.
Yes, we have! Not, not everybody, I've told you that, we can, we can bring anything.
No, the only thing I said, I heard you say the other last week was, you have to, everybody like.
Last week?
Well, last month. You said the seven-lane bridge, this is great, and that is a single, that's important thing, because they built the bridge about every seventy-five or a hundred years. The fact that that's going to be a seven-lane bridge allows us the option. But I was gonna say, if you guys are prodding or, uh, like, recommending, you know, we have some fast ones. But we have to have four or three lanes between Bridgeville and South Bay, so we stay in South Bay. Then that's one, and we're done. Why aren't they on the seven?
Again, we're not, not a conceptual plan, we'll not change it right now, so it'll take a move forward.
Yeah, and you're not, I don't think, a, 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 this, 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 uh, other drawing, uh, P V E, uh, you can take a look at that, but they, they're, apparently, they're designed to tell us that two lanes must necessarily come up.
Apparently, South Bay.
And I understand that, the people in the audience, the importance of having double traffic portals for consumer motorists is simply, that it allows twice the number of consumer motorists to pass the entrances. All the businesses in, in that quarter, South Bay, the same in Bridgeville, is about my point. So I'm, I'm, I'm leaving these foxes in the air.
I would, I would also ask you to, um, go to the South Bay meeting and present this as well.
I'm going to, I think it's tomorrow, from night after tomorrow, I'll be there.
Make sure you do, because if you look at, if you look at that map there, there's a, there's a river going through there, Charter Spring, and about eighty percent of the projects in South Bay.
Well, with the body lines between, it doesn't matter, it's just in South.
Just saying.
If, if something in South Bay affects the people in Bridgeville, it's not to us, make sure it doesn't, and vice versa. If we're doing something that's restricting, if, if we, if South Bay restricted our water flow, our electricity, this is the same. Okay, but, but, um, the, the comprehension that's developed between the two communities is remarkable, and everybody seems to be getting along very well. But it's up to you guys to make sure that these meetings are that way. But for the benefit of the.
I will also, um, I will, I will, I will also, I will have my cable and parents on.
That'd be great. Lori did say, you can contact the webmaster, write us some of this information.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, uh, one, remember?
It's, it's, I, I, it's helpful that we're, I've got a website now, today, um, if not, you should be up on the website, and within the next few days, and then I'll see you for classes.
That's great, that's true.
We'll keep, um, posting and sending other letters.
Okay, excuse me, one final point, and I don't think you'll be this long. Well, the fundamental problem is, anytime you spend a dollar, pen dollar, every day, it's money. They want a study to prove that that, that width and breadth is necessary, but that went for the improvement, that is, there's a problem with this intersection, with South Bay and Bridgeville. It's been like, in nineteen eighty-eight, there was thirty thousand cars right there. That was twelve years ahead of the Southwestern, uh, Regional Planning Commission estimated, they would be. The point is, some of you, for the last thirty-five years, have been finding detour routes around that intersection, around the South Bay. So if, if, if Mike Caperman or any other traffic engineer conducts a traffic study, it'll be meaningless, because fifty percent of the people who would normally drive through that, that funnel area, the funnel will turn around. So fifty percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, yeah, that's an accurate study. Matter of fact, when I was chairing the planning commission twenty years ago, we did a telephone study called Two Hundred People, and that was right after the nineteen eighty-eight study by classic telephone. Fifty percent of the two hundred people had, making detours around this area, and now, for all I know, maybe even more. But anyway, there's, there's, there's a mathematical problem in getting the widths and lengths of this road improvement based on the, uh, the flaws in the, we just had the Henry Mappra, he, uh, ran PennDOT for fourteen years. He's saying this plan, and he unquestionably agrees that they have to consider the detour number, the detour. Some, you know, traffic engineers, they're well aware of that, well said, they actually.
Well, I actually.
Know how to take that into consideration.
What, will you guys make sure that they do?
Your priority is much above mine on traffic science and reports, and they actually, I, I, you ask the traffic.
Well, they're, they know about the concepts of.
Well, what concepts? And they do, it's, 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 uh, uh, uh. All right, I might mention that. Uh, remember, twenty-four months ago, this road project was gonna be a six-foot wide, and it grew, and this company was always spun out about it, exposed it to the news media and general public. And it's now expanding this, this, uh, again, thanks to.
Mike Reagan, please. All right, I'm Mike Reagan, I've been here before. I live on Bridge Road, Upper Saint Clair's, uh, schools. Um, my concern now is not too much the speed, it's the traffic. It's a constant parade of construction vehicles, ever since the Wagner Farms project was kicked off. Not getting any better, it's getting a lot worse. In addition to the dusty vehicles kicking up, there's noise because of our, our speed ramps. These tractor trailers carrying these heavy construction vehicles, they're hitting these speed ramps, and it's a very loud sound. Now, the third thing is the same. We were running, I don't know how many pickup trucks, and tractor trailers, and delivery vehicles across Bridge Road, and then back again, somebody's been getting hurt. That road's not built for that kind of traffic. Now, last Saturday, I told the chief, and tell, and confirm that two tractor trailers, fifty-foot trailers, were stuck on Bridge Road, trying to get out of Wagner Farms. They were stuck, could not move. I mean, the chief and his deputy backed one up, out and out. I don't know how the first guy got around the curb, down, down in the, uh, the line, you know, well. They were stuck there, blocking traffic, and this is not the first time. Fortunately, these were, these were flatbeds. Full tractor trailers have gone through, and you can see them just dimming the power and cable service lines as they go down Bridge Road. Now, they're gonna wipe somebody out, and knock everybody's power out, and we're never gonna know who these guys are. I know this is a difficult problem, okay? I have a suggestion. Now, I've heard that the magistrate does not honor tickets written for, for violating the local service only sign, or, you know.
It would only respect the jury, none of the citations we've issued have gone in front of the magistrate yet.
Okay, so we don't know that?
We don't know that yet.
Okay, well, two scenarios, one is she, if the magistrate throws down, okay? Um, do the, um, do the people that are charged with these citations have to show up?
Yes, if they don't show up, they'll become guilty in their absence, but if they show up, they're entitled to it here.
Okay, keep writing them. Because I was a businessman here before I retired, and I, I ran seven vans throughout the state. If I had to go in because they couldn't take a different route, and sit in the magistrate's office just to get it thrown out, I would, I would've told them to take the other route. Simple as that. The inconvenience factor, whether, whether you get fines or not, the inconvenience factor alone will change the behavior, I guarantee. So, but what we do need is we need enforcement, we need somebody writing these statements. Second suggestion, part-time officer, constable, whatever, somebody with ticket-writing authority. Sit on Bridge Road from three to four in the afternoon, from seven to eight-thirty in the morning, and just keep writing.
Chief, the, those were, I'm pretty sure those are the hours you've got, right?
Yes, right now, Mr. Reagan, what we're doing, we develop the schedule, we're dedicating one hour a day to Bridge Road. What do we do is, this month of June's been a trial here, trial phase, I'm sorry. We have midnight sitting there some mornings from six until six-thirty. We then will have daylight, sit there at various times during the day, afternoon at various times during the day. It's basically hit and miss, we have to be there when they come by. I know myself, I've written, printed three tickets up there, just making the patrols through that I have. As you said earlier about the magistrate, whether she'll hold these tickets, time will tell, as we get hearings in front of her. The problem that we have is, before I was a police officer, I was in the construction business, okay, I was self-employed. I don't like writing working man tickets, okay? But here's the problem. We have gone as far as drafting a letter, which I have copies up here, and I'll give anybody in the audience wants a copy of it, so they can see it. We've, I've actually hand-delivered a letter to the proj. We've, I've actually hand-delivered a letter to the project manager, Bednar Estates, telling him, make copies of this, give it to your contractors and subcontractors, and have them pass it out to their subcontractors if necessary. And we're making them aware of our ordinance that we have so they do not utilize our roads. This was done back in April. Everybody that I've stopped, to this date, and other vehicles that have been stopped by the officers, word is not getting put out by the project manager. He's failing to do his job, although it seems as though he doesn't care. So we've taken steps to prevent us from having to write tickets. But now, we started with a set schedule. We have guys at random times during the day sitting up there. Two or four guys in a van going to hammer nails or screw screws, that's not a violation of our ordinance, okay? You get a flatbed truck hauling drywall, hauling bricks, hauling a backhoe, that's a different story. We had a mown faucet guy drive up there the other day. That was one that I thought, okay? They were actually going through the, the, the plan across from Bednar Estates, okay? We are addressing it. I think to this point, we've issued sixteen citations. Uh, now, some of those are for stop sign violations. So a lot of guys sit right there at the park. But we're getting the best of both worlds in these cases. One of the other issues we had is it was the posting of the signs. We only had a sign posted for the traffic coming up Ridge Road. We had, we're more signs, that took time for them to get made. They were just actually posted today, right where Ridge Road starts, when they're coming from Upper St. Clair by Cook School Park. Because the ordinance that we have for local deliveries only only covers Ridge Road, does not cover Pesavento, it does not cover Cook School Road. Tractor trailer come up Cook School Road. If it can make the left turn by the park, it can go to Bednar Estates. We don't have weight limits up there either. So today, prior to meeting the mayor and the road crew up there, a large flatbed, probably one that hauls a small crane, came from Upper St. Clair. I just flagged him down by the park, made him aware he can't go down Ridge Road, made him aware that we're gonna be posting signs within the hour. Well, his GPS had him going down Cook School Road. I saw it on his dashboard. So he was fine, it was not in violation of any ordinance. Um, we are addressing it. I know this is a major problem for you guys up there on Ridge Road. It's a major inconvenience, but we're dedicating the time we can dedicate to it. We do have other problems in town that we have to address.
Of course. One suggestion about time.
Mm-hmm.
On my dog walker, train three and four is when all those guys.
Gotcha. We try to hit it various times. Some of the ones I've written have been midday at lunchtime.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they go to lunch too, so, um, you know, it's just, it's a matter of us being there at the right time. And.
They do. You know, on Saturday?
At the center, uh, for, uh, we have ten waste managers who are all youngsters go up and then come back with a full launch.
Okay.
They're gonna talk about allow. I actually stopped a tractor trailer coming up Ridge Road. I was driving down, so I got in the other, and I stopped down, I said, immediate. He doesn't have.
Well, that's, that's a good way to handle that, Sean. I would advise against that.
They don't allow work on that.
No, we, we take it to the driver.
Peace.
The frog, you know, but to further address that, what irritates me is, is when I've given the means to the project manager. I've also called Mr. Brillhart from Upper St. Clair Township, who won't return my calls, in an effort to try to prevent this from happening, and they're not passing the information on. I mean, I hand-delivered the guy I left, said, may I?
The reason is, they probably don't want these vehicles using MacMillan.
Absolutely. But I'm saying, they, they, a lot of the people that were at the, uh, Upper St. Clair meetings for the last three years, I have to basically, just get this party to the amount that we made there. Um, they get very clear that there were not to be trucks going up and down through Ridge Road. That was one of their big selling points on why they were proving it. You know, that was one of the things that got their votes together. These trucks were not gonna come up here. Maybe it wasn't gonna be open for till twenty-twenty. You know, all of these little different things that now we're seeing constantly happen to us now. Um, along with that, what's the reason that we don't have ordinance as all Pesavento made? It's just something that wasn't necessarily attached?
Well, here's one of the problems. On, on, on Cook School Road, as you're coming up, we actually have a sign that says below the truck with the Ghostbuster slash through it. We don't have an ordinance for that. So I told them, you gotta take that sign down because that's a legal route for these vehicles to take.
I'd like a big motion to get that ordinance.
The only, my, my only concern is, and I don't disagree with your notion to make an ordinance for Cook School Road. In my opinion, that's safer because that would then prevent, hopefully, some of the traffic from going by the park where there's kids. But what I don't know, and this may be in the solicitor's hands, is at what point are we trapping these vehicles? You know, in my opinion, Upper St. Clair should have some sort of signage in their town where you come out of that estate to say, don't use Bridgeville roads. But whose, whose, who, whose shoulders does that fall on?
Have notable Bednar Estates construction vehicles to go down Scarlett, which will then be the path for some point five. So they, they've done their piece to come to their side. We're very clear that they're interested in our.
Right, but what I'm saying is, I don't know if there's any political influence that can be used to work together with them to say, hey, here's the deal, we're gonna start creating ordinances to close down all of our streets from deliveries. If we can do that, not allow an escape route, because if a, if a vehicle leaves Bednar Estates and makes the right, and all of a sudden it hits the intersection of Cook School Road and Pesavento and there's a sign saying, you can't use our roads, what are they to do?
Well, that's it. The, you know, project manager should be informed of that this is the route they have to take.
He hasn't done it yet, so why is he, you know, that's.
So when they stop there, I mean, what, so they keep coming and taking? Uh, getting together with them is not gonna help. They're not going to agree with us whatsoever. I can, I can promise you that.
Just to get to the center. Uh, I think that adding Cook School still provides a way out on Pesavento. So council, if council would, would be interested in at least looking at an advertising for, to add Cook School Road to no trucks. I think, you know.
I think it's really, is there a weight limit?
No, we talked about that today, said there was no weight limits on Cook School or Pesavento. And the signs up there, it said three times. But I told the road crew, get them out of there.
The ordinance should never sign.
Yeah, what we're finding is, I think, I think a long time ago, somebody decided that, you know, there should be a sign near the, the parking lot sign or weight limit, we put them up. But now it's achieved, and I look because he needs to enforce them. They're not in our code, so we need to enforce it.
It's probably there because it's real narrow down under Cook School. It's a really thick wall. It's holding the road up. It's probably why.
Maybe it's not important, I'm sure it's put there because that's so narrow at that time.
But we, the sign is usually without an ordinance.
Yeah. There's no way. That's a good point.
What's that? If we registered, the minimum is Bridgeville, when he was, they were saying on the route that they were there saying this. They're taking the opposite route, not really traffic. They told us that this was a route that's protected.
Yeah, they do. They don't say for me.
I know what you're saying, Mr. McDonald, but it hasn't worked out that way. And what frustrates me is, is I go there and give them the means. Give, pass these out, and it's not happening, you know? And that's what's very frustrating. Um, to get back to Mr., uh, uh, Lyons's comment, though, you're aware, Neil, at least with Cook School and Pesavento, there's two separate routes. If we do enact an ordinance for Cook School Road, that means an ordinance is coming right in front of your house.
Can we defer on Pesavento, right?
Well, this is the problem. If they come now, that's the route they're going to know.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Either Mr. Leonard, we send that to study, or you, we have a motion on the floor that we're taking care of the home and the other. We have to do more study. And there's no question about how much more we can take from, from Upper St. Clair, something that we, so we have a motion on the floor. So after Mr. Leonard to rephrase that, to say that, this motion.
Well, can the ordinance not be on those roads? Or is that because there's no exit route to take those?
That's gonna be a solicitor's.
On Cook and Pesavento, that was both what I was talking about. So definitely, it wouldn't be going past that, because it's impossible.
Well, they have a good way to turn around. Yeah.
I'll, I'll say this, Neil.
Say what they do now, they're gonna keep going. I mean, at least we have something.
We actually had a tractor trailer make the turn in front of Cook School Park to stay on Cook School Road. I didn't think we was gonna be able to do it. And that's a short turn right there.
Is that what I was saying?
No, this was a couple of months back, maybe a month ago.
No.
It had to be since April first.
I'm sorry, how long ago?
I don't know.
Can the solicitor just start sending them bills? Just start charging them.
I don't, that's for real, listen.
Is there any way that we can say that the companies that work for, not the individual drivers, but the companies that work.
Right. It has to go to the person behind the wheel. Because here's the other problem I've encountered, Mr. Reagan. There's been vehicles I've stopped that come up Ridge Road, and the first thing I ask them is, did you see the sign that said, no truck traffic? And when we have right at the bottom of Ridge Road, come up with lock. The answer nine times out of ten is yes. Then I ask them, were you ever told by the project manager or anybody at Bednar Estates not to use Bridgeville roads? The answer every time has been no. And then I get, well, my GPS showed me to come this way. But then I come back to them and say, but they gave you two other routes, right? You know, so everybody's fool excuses. They see the sign, they ignore it. But it's, it's, this problem is more than just the choice of the driver. There's no communication on the end of Bednar Estates.
And they don't just, I'd like to forgive everybody a mistake one time, but there are trucks that every day.
Well, and, and as we cite them, as we cite them, work will get out. Because I told the guys, when you follow the manuals, first you have to follow them to make sure they go through Bridgeville. Because if they're making a delivery on a Bridgeville street, the ordinance does not apply. Okay? If they come up Ridge Road to get to Pesavento, they're fine. Soon as they cross the line, then we can stop them. I say, wait till they turn into Bednar's, pull them over where everybody can see it. Okay, and that's what we do.
You can even do that up at St. Clair?
We can stop them at Upper St. Clair for the violation they committed in Bridgeville. And really, when you're on that road, that's the safest place to stop somebody.
Well, I think probably the best way is to make convenience better. We're, we're doing it here, how you guys. I don't like finding a working man. If there's any way you can find his boss and make him a real pain, the boss will get annoyed.
Well, I'd ask too, that, on that scrawly drive up at St. Clair, it's a pretty old, even downright sign. That's, it's obvious it's be going down.
I saw a picture of it.
Is there, I mean, are we able to put something like that up? Or is that something that's out of our hands?
For, I don't like putting a sign up if we don't have a way of backing it. I mean, that's like giving a threat out back.
Well, part of the, part of the whole argument from them was that when this development was going on, one of the reasons why everything came to how it came to in the end was they were not supposed to be using Bridgeville to go through there. And Tom, like you said, the traffic engineers know a lot about traffic. The gentleman that did their traffic engineer's study said there's gonna be twenty cars coming out of there at day in the morning, which we all know is certainly an act. So, I mean, we're, we're looking at a scenario where we're trusting people's, people's word for what they said, and they're not keeping. There should be some way for us to enforce that. I know it's, it's gonna be tricky, I know there's stuff, you know, but there should be, I mean, this was all, there was guns were out, there's things that went on because this is the way this stuff is supposed to happen.
You know, I understand what you're saying. And I said from day one, this gentleman's agreement, or anyone on the call that came out, there's nothing we can do about it.
Why would it mention the ordinance that he was forced?
I, I, I mean, I mean, let me make a suggestion too. We only had some of these different ordinances from the Department of Road, weight limitations, the types of whatnot. Um, we would be worried all through the chief and manager, the mayor, the governor, the next meeting, to make sure it wasn't the road. Because this is just one road, or a, or a kind of, this has brought to our attention a number of roads. This should be considered, bringing recommendations back in the next month and along with it to act. So that. Right, that's the long term, okay? That's not, that's long term. I mean, you get the ordinance that, uh, one month away. The long term, the issue's a lot more longer than the traffic issue as far as close construction and all that. As far as the construction issues, I am all, I think, have a chief of the bed or manager as well, because I think they're all, uh, all towards some influence there. He would, uh, the servant, he's made the construction for us to, to, to go away. And then.
I think what we should do is have a public safety meeting with the solicitors. For a better, for a better, obviously, that's influenced the chief. And study this, and Mr. Leonard requests to go ahead with the motion. How we send the motion. We have a motion on the floor, something that we have tabled on, or at some level. Yeah, I have no say.
I'm not. From what I've heard, you need to be, you have to function over. You know, you can put great numbers on.
They build, hold off with that. That complicates it for us because we don't have scales. We're gonna have to purchase scales and get guys trained on how to weigh vehicles. And that's gonna cost a lot of money. So I would shy away from the weight limit and stick to the delivery orders.
Because the driver's responsible for anything that goes on in that weight.
Chief, how high are those fines for those new trucks?
Um, the size of the truck doesn't matter. Basically, the standard fine is the same as a basic traffic ticket. The fine is twenty-five dollars, but with all the costs, it takes it up to a hundred and twenty-eight fifty.
Wow.
No, it's not very much. But there's also a second, a second violation we can charge, which is disobedience to traffic control. Nobody says, there's no, there's no points, and that's probably two hundred and fifty dollar fine. The guys are using their discretion as to which one they wanna cite under the ordinance for the obedience to the sign. So I'm not gonna give them an order, I'm letting them use discretion on that.
Well, I'd make a, I'd make a motion to ask the public safety to move forward with study, study the rules and come back with a comment, or come back with a recommendation. And that's me, so to move forward with that, that's, that's the next.
That's the process.
So I can't make the motion, that's. But you have to go through the study. Just, just the same, I'm just saying, just the same of saying, we'll put an ordinance on the road. You have to be very proud of what you're doing.
Yes, we did plenty.
That way, we did the traffic study and all that up originally. That's why we put a speed.
So we should be.
Well, it isn't safe.
Yeah, but we don't know.
Well, what am I able to label others for? If you're saying I can't, can't do that, and I can't do that, but.
I mean, let me, let me. I just, I mean, you guys, give us a chance. What is, can I make it wrong? Let me, let me throw something on the table because I understand what we want to go, to study and to look at, how public safety, when people look at.
Do it right, but just with.
Do it right, not even. Hold on a second. Let me, let me, let me throw this out. Public safety is playing a meeting in the next couple of weeks. Perhaps Mr. Land's, I'm in this motion to have public safety look at and then advertise to add, if they see fit, then advertise for Cook and/or Pesavento to be added to the list of streets published, there are no, no tracks. That.
I think he was asking, right back to the committee itself. It was.
That's what I'm saying. I think what they said was basically, with the exception of the, of the, of the advertising advertisement, I think the suggestion was for them to study and come back next month with a list of things to that. At that point, it could be proposed for advertising.
Right, I was trying to, I was trying to shorten down what's the public safety comes up with their list, but that then be what's advertised. What public safety, they need to.
Like any committee.
Then I would suggest, recommendations after, color. Then let's make them, then let's ask for a meeting after the public safety meeting of council so that they can then motion and move ahead and have a special meeting. Okay? That gets you your time, I like.
As long as we have a time limit.
No, you wouldn't have that with me.
As long as you have a time, you're, you wouldn't have that with me. It's not very much, but.
They have non-conditions that, that's a special meeting.
That makes you, yeah. Do that.
So that if, if we don't, next month.
That's what I'm saying. I don't wanna be more stuff. I can't, I can say, I don't want, I don't want the, we need to, this is a special meeting. Excellent, on to motion.
How about?
I'm reading the motion.
Motion to have safety, safety.
Yeah, motion to ask Public Safety, for the Public Safety meeting to move forward and for the study on Pesavento Drive, and the, and the, and the, and the, that may need some. The traffic.
Not, be able to, that truck on that kind of, again.
Well, we need to, we need to, we need to go past them. Because you're not going to, to, or, or, or that whole hill. Absolutely, you can walk, I'm just saying, that's what, that's what we need. I mean, I'm gonna do some, I just didn't want to be like, that's what I'm trying to answer. I'm bringing that expectation. So we have, we have to, we have to, I'm gonna see a motion. But I got, James, I didn't want to, I don't want to. I wouldn't think I'm gonna have that before the trial.
Yeah, so now, there we have our Public Safety meeting within the last week or so. So now, when they have the Public Safety meeting, and, and if they may bring some agents, then I'll contact you guys, and then we can have a special meeting. I'm gonna advertise it, is everybody available? And then I'll get it advertised, and.
We're gonna, that's what, that's a lot. The motion, it's, it's okay, I'll say I'm gonna motion.
Well, I'm up here, this, uh, Lori, when we were investigating the speed limits, you said that they were highly effective with Adrian Townshend. They don't seem to be very effective on their trucks. Are they just bad?
Yes, they are.
They are. And there's no way we can raise them, sharpen them, any. Spikes would go, you know.
Can you guys poison on the tips?
Yeah. We might, children.
We actually had the child, the stranger, they were.
Even with the new surface that we did? We didn't even touch it.
We didn't touch it now.
Well, we have a surface, they've raised. They don't seem to be very effective.
Thank you, thank you. You'll have a motion, be a second here, um, although it's fair. All right? Although it's close. Um, my town. What is, make us go to 232 Station, Mr. President. Yeah, one of the addresses, the Lori and the chief, about curfew in Bridgeville.
Now, it's unlawful to enact a curfew unless we can have a well-documented problem with juveniles, which we don't really have right now.
I have a pretty big influx of juveniles in my area.
Okay.
And, uh, weekends particularly.
Okay.
One night, I went down, six p.m., hanging out in front of Methodist Church. I made a call, Gary. And, uh, when the city came down, by that time, they were gone. They're hanging out down Station Street in front of the church. And the Methodist Church, and behind my alley. Actually, they were laying, they were laying, probably ate them. And again, we're all in a truck, and got away. And, uh, I was just going up there to throw a few more. We didn't have, no, we do not have a curfew. It was not, not just, I have two, I have two tenants, two around Chester. And, uh, they're afraid to stand here.
I wanna add to that, that we had three bands that were pulled down. And that was at night, when those kids were on the road. I talked to, uh, X Mayor Hilton. The kids are climbing up and standing on that cross. I forget who was there with that group that killed. They're standing on top of that stone cross that they put up there. I walked over, one day told me to get off, with their mom and dad, so I had to pay for a cross, but, uh, it's like you said, I walked down, it was at night, and they're laying in that vacant lot. They're laying in that gravel area behind the, like, church on the ground. They're laying.
What kind of ages do you think they are, Mike?
Fourteen to sixteen.
Fourteen to sixteen, okay.
It's only the, it's worse to.
Well, we can chew them out of there, but we do not have a, 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 uh, curfew. And we don't, the solicitor might be able to expand on why we can't just enact it.
Can't because they actually.
We don't just ask them. We do have a constitution. Ask them, sorry. He'll probably answer it. Ask them if their parents are, give them a call.
Correct.
Rather than that.
Right, but if they're not doing anything wrong either, we can say, hey, buddy, just, but the problem is, we've only had one call on this, so.
I live on Shady, and, uh, in the Verizon driveway. And there were, there was a pile of kids playing around on their bikes. They, they went out, just being noisy, like, you're saying, quite the same. Oh, and I don't know, I think they were a little younger. I just, I went out, I told them, "It's bedtime." And the white kid looked at her phone, and she said, "You didn't hear that, right?" I'm not saying that, I'm just, I just went out and told them, "Oh, yeah."
Wasn't there one line there was on that road? Yes, because my kids thought it was on you.
Be more lax on here.
It's a lot of, yeah.
I like, I like counsel, I like, I like counsel.
I like, I like, I like, I like, I like curfew.
Yeah.
I mean, does there have to be, like, I mean, I, you know, this is an extreme case, obviously. Like, they had a curfew in Baltimore recently.
Well, between we're talking, state of emergency.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Let's not have that happen.
No, 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 I'm not saying it at all, but do any of the other towns in the area have curfews?
I don't believe you can. You, you would have to research that. I know we looked into it many years ago, when the problem was cheap.
Yeah, there was when I was a kid.
I can tell you from last sixteen, seventeen years, I had one. I had the, my sister.
Yeah, the whistle would go off.
If my wife was there, I feel like, you think it was a curfew because your parents told you there was a curfew?
Well, it was gonna have to whistle it off.
Yes, and your parents told you you had to be home, but the sun went down at nine forty-five, with something triggered it. You get, how many times have you been arrested for violating something?
I knew that, if it was, after we had to whistle, I saw a piece part of rain.
That's the problem, you know, the parents did tell you to come up. You're gonna get your, okay? Well, there's a lot of kids that only have a single, single parent. And that single parent's probably working, and that kid's out, forcing her out. That's why, that's why I would like to see.
I can, we can, I mean, I'm sure we can, at least we can do it. See what, I don't want to let the legality, we can do it. It's a slippery slope.
You know, when you have young kids at your house, and you put their feet on your, your table.
Yeah.
They don't tell you how to run your house.
You're right.
Yeah, but you don't, you know. What I'm saying is. We need, we need adults, should be, I have two issues, like, before I have, well, the first issue. Is there anything being done, the plans no longer, by the North End, or should?
All right. We, 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 it's definitely something that, you know, we want to, you know, it's. Not like we have a health, I mean, it's something that, yeah, we have been calling for us.
Well, I, I guess everyone knows that, on, on that bridge, almost as bad as the one to, like, was on the other side. And no one could saw, of those two bridges on end, anything like, what they took to crawl inside of it. Uh, the issue I can come on, really talk about, the first issue, is, uh, what we like to see, and I know Route 15 is a state road, Presley Road is a state road. Is there any chance that you may consider a right-hand turn on red, now Presley and 15?
That's a, I mean, in more, I've talked about it. I've talked about it, we, we envision that, or that's exactly, they, they, um, it's a matter of, we have been moved forward to actually create something else.
If you have a two minute table, it was a modest proposal, like, it's allowed a right turn on red, which was allowed for many, many years, until pinned on the side of the public side.
And, and that would be something that I would call, I'd, uh, just like I could call it, you know, I'm trying to get the air road here on Long Island Road. And if you jump, you know, it's like, um.
Well, it's something I was thinking, having, I mean, how many doors? Presley, we had a block at night, it's gonna try.
And so right turn on red, I mean, trying to, trying to, trying to sound right turn on red.
This is, um, on, that's exactly, that's the problem. It's originally, I'm asking, what traffic, traffic?
I can absolutely.
If they're all correct, I mean, they just waste the time, or it seems they're only a bit long.
I did.
You're correct. And what happens is, because it's something difficult with Presley, you end up reverting traffic through Charlotte and Chest. And something you have to propose to curfew.
And there's nothing over there. But most of the time, it comes back while the roads are moving.
Yes.
And they have to come in and spend more than five minutes and raise the time on the day.
The all losing side, the Murphy side, has a relative traffic coming out. You're not moving that hurry very much, because the left can't turn off the power no longer.
And I didn't have so much trouble getting the turns in the wrong stations for the animal.
Would Susan want to counsel me? How far?
I'll send someone.
Motion or something, and counsel is asking for this?
Well, that's not possible. Instead of me just sending someone saying, "My occasion of counsel, we need the council to ask for that." This area of all, yes, that one.
Okay.
Lauren, you're talking about the three, like the bar, if you're coming from.
If you're coming though, if you're coming from Murray Avenue and you're leaving in your own road, to make the left-hand turn to go Washington Avenue.
So you're sitting on Murray Avenue.
You're sitting on Murray Road, but what's happening is.
So left onto.
Left onto Washington Avenue.
You want the left there.
Yes, because what's happening is.
I understand why you're sitting on, you meant left coming from like.
No, you meant left.
Left onto.
Left onto Murray Road. Going south.
Then your section is so wide, people are cutting everybody off there in all directions. People end up sitting inside of the box because it's like this long thing. It is pretty messy there.
And nobody lets you in. Because before Murray Avenue, you were going along. But you're in front, I've tried. It's scary.
Right.
When I was on with counsel, I remember that we put that no, no right hand, the bottom of Presley, no, no right on red, because we had problems with trucks coming down and making that turn. There's no, there's no road. And I think.
You do get a lot of trucks in the concrete.
I think, I think that's why, because we had a couple of holes that were torn out at that corner there. And that's, that's.
They just go on Washington.
Right. You have, you have two lanes.
Yeah.
You have a right-hand, a left-hand lane, and you have a straight lane. There's, there's three lanes right there. And when, we had problems with trucks making a right. On the way, there was a man, and he was passing up the poles at that corner. That's why there was a no right, no right on red, in the bottom of Presley. Restricting truck traffic.
What would be the difference if they were, if you were making, you're allowed to make a right.
If you're on Washington, and you're making a left up Presley, that traffic comes up. That traffic comes up.
There are blocks.
Pretty close to that red line. And you have two lanes there. You have a left going up Presley, you have a straight on Washington. Well, they don't stop where they're supposed to stop, and that's the problem. And the problem, the other problem was, you have trucks coming down, trying to make that.
Right. So the issue, I understand what you're saying. So the issue is that the trucks need to stop further back.
No, the truck ends.
Truck on Washington. It's not a danger, it's a lane.
On Washington. But how does this affect a right turn on red?
Because you can't, we're talking about seven lanes to make connections.
Cars and white, and white, and red, they're not white, but.
Yeah, cars need to be back for hours, but that's what it's doing. The roads are speeded, it's easy to stop. Needs to stop further up Presley. Doesn't, now there are the cars on Washington.
What would you pay for it?
I'd turn this thing. Don't move it, I have a question for you. Go ahead. Our second, second motion on Murray Avenue actually refers back to the Baldwin Street. Which, you have the road field, at the end of Carroll Avenue also should be included. Anytime we talk about Baldwin Street, because there is potential for flood damage. So today, I walked in between the end of Carroll Avenue, at the end between the bowling alley and my cousin Frank's building, his property. That's a burlong driveway, fifteen-foot right, for us. Look up to creek towards Birkenhead. I was scared. That creek was at its widest during, it was four feet. Someone is dumping the debris into that creek. We stepped in the spot.
It's not the bridge, it's the, it's the. We tried to get it, we.
I guess we're talking semantics here, but.
Yeah, I know. I had an education from what you're at.
College. My teacher. Would you, would you say that, have some engineer to take a look at? We know the same. I mean, we could think of one guy that we could. Because I know what he's, we had, we'd see remorse, and then he gets dumped out further. Why is the owner's equipment, it becomes a dam?
That's, that's why we had all that, all the things that had been taken out of July, July 2013 storm. So.
Right. I have a question, when you were in counsel, something that's very important. I looked at minutes from our own one L one, we're debating this Baldwin, Barrio Road. When you were in counsel, I noticed that, then I even talked to Jerry Oren, when I was the president at that time, that we still have an agreement there that we signed to pay, to pay us to take care of Baldwin Street, up in the, up at Barrio. So.
The state.
The state, but it's county, the county wants each state, state the one, so we made the cut. About one point, and we can't find work. It must have been seventy and on. I know it wasn't none of this administration, I'm working, I know that. Because I was also signed a contract to get paid. Somehow, we come to win the bar in counsel, one time, day two, Barrio Road. The county is not ready. And the minutes, it's good record, because it's saying, yes, from PJ to Washington Avenue, PJ to Silvia. We paid to take care of. So this means that from PJ to Washington, we own that. Right now, we own that. Who the hell give this road? The bridge, our bridge, and we try to find out where the hell was.
So I was on the seventy-six day at four, and I don't remember.
So, so, and after the four, I came in, and we never, I never remember that conversation in there.
Why would we take over from?
Why would we want to take over from?
Basically, the winter maintenance, it wasn't.
That's correct.
But it was a winter maintenance.
Winter maintenance, like the bottom was the renumeration, and the state was giving.
Right. And second.
But it was, if I remember, an issue of taking care of the maintenance of the hard surface. It was taking care of the winter snow, snow would have salved it. And now all of a sudden, we're taking care of it.
We found in the second, nineteen seventy, that Albee Company reimbursed for, not winter maintenance, but for the reconstruction of the roadway. And in that piece of college, the minutes, it stated that either the county or the state could be taking over that portion of the roadway, we found out that much. And the last time I talked to the county, which was years ago, they told me that we have, I have no record of any agreement, I can't find any in over. As far as agreeing to that. And I talked to the county years ago, they told me the records had lost. And I put some calls into the county to do an inspection again, to try to see if they can get any further information, because the state has a long time to read back. So that's what we're.
We have a lot of expenses, we've got the wall over there, of our council. We've got something for that. We don't want these, this.
Sue, sue, sue.
You're in Congress, you don't work at Albee Road, right?
Yes.
And that party, you want one, you want to do the same, right?
Well, we don't want that. No, no, no. I don't see that. Stay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm here in Congress, but we don't, we can't even find the record of when it was transferred to you.
Yeah.
Eventually, along with him.
Right.
And we think, yes.
We don't. We're going to the county, and we can't find the record or any agreements to when it was transferred to us. And when we started to take out the maintenance of, of that roadway, we like escaped it.
At least, it's something the county, the state recognizes there, because we have.
The county.
Oh, they're really, we're glad, and we're off the.
Yeah.
We're satisfied, it's some, 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 at least that.
Yeah, so we were reading, as we had time, we're reading back those minutes, and they did record, record. You know, we did find that part, but you know, we don't know exactly what happened. How would we end up, then, how would we end up with all the maintenance? And you know, it is, it's just so costly for us, how would we? Nineteen, I'm in the nineteen, we're in nineteen seventy right now.
You were asking them.
I asked the county, the county told me they didn't, they, they didn't. They, they don't, when I talked to them a couple years ago, they said that they, because all those old records have been lost. And I could have called into the county about a week and a half ago, and I talked to the secretary, and she was going to check into it, and then the director was going to check into it. And you may call back, as of today, I haven't called you back, so I'm going to call you again tomorrow.
We should put pressure on the lawyer.
It's a pleasure. See, when the start of actually checking the minutes last week, a month is the first start. The next check I do is the, since we're straight.
I want to make one thing clear, kind of, that's like, when we mention Baldwin Street, we mean the entire, you know, mine, temple, the whole block. We mentioned Baldwin Street is the core of the block, but so is for you, and so is the northern. They all the more, see, we weren't.
I just don't understand, again, I don't want to say we did it the right way or whatever, sure. But we had D eight, once a year.
Yeah.
That baby went into the creek. And we sold, and somebody sold. And why can't we do that?
Wrong, wrong.
Indeed.
Wrong, I thought it was a column, a column, all two floors, I didn't do it. Wrong, we could actually be arrested.
It's not what we used to do in the seventies.
No, wrong.
You're absolutely right. That's why, that's why the answer, you, what you said, was more settlement. Settlement. Thank you.
Do it for us.
Hey, I'll see you, thanks.
All right. If you didn't mind, man, it didn't last enough.
Before we get out of the regular being, um, before we get out of this stuff, anybody else? One, one, all right. Um, a motion for a motion regarding the minutes of May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen workshop meeting at seven minutes. What? Before you had a motion, you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, the council, and right, right here, I don't know.
That's, that might be, yeah, we did, we did, I said, all right. Second, when I say, yes, all those in favor, all about five. Motion for a count, regarding the minutes of May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen workshop meeting at seven minutes. Bruce and Jason, all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Um, this next one, zoning amendment petition shoots to LLC, one twelve Washington Avenue. We are taking that until July, and Wayne wants information from the county that was supposed to be, because they have before now. I can add this to the table. Uh, burlong original wave finding project. Motion for a burlong council regarding design choice for the bridge over burlong wave finding project. Uh, the words have been in the administration, administration entryway. The designs included in the newsletter, called a comment, and they are ranked at, you know, the second. So, you're in view, I know a lot of people who are familiar with these, if anybody's in Iowa. Um, we were working with a company, a documentary called KMA, we were doing wave finding project original. We're basically new signage for that street, and then eventually taking over, signing out the, the actual. So these are two designs that will be mentioned, uh, buried about two. I believe it was a census from our council, throughout most people we've talked to. Um, is it that one here?
Actually, we actually, we put it in the newsletter, hopefully, everybody got it. We asked for input as far as choices, just hoping that we get a response, and we probably got fifteen, um, twenty-two hundred newsletters ago. Um, when I went to the Chamber of Commerce manager meeting, I told the two designs there, and, and put them on the tables, and asked, you know, what, what their opinions were. And Cece, I think you were there, and I think those people were there. Um, so, I, I mean, I asked the general, I asked Tom, I go, um, everybody.
Oh, my sisters.
Yes, all of us. We asked everybody in town, so.
White's in the music, or?
White.
Well, thank you.
That, that would really make a sound of. That's, that's a favorite, don't worry, don't worry. Stand up. Everybody, favorite of this one here, the red razor.
Correct.
Red, red. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Is it red or official color or something?
No. It just wore a little bit of red in the eyes.
Hold on, I don't realize it. Is that a lake in general, or is it not red?
No, mine are white.
That's pretty.
I'm red. Okay, I'm in white.
One, one, two, three, four. I think, I think, Fever Burgum has this same type of signage, and, um, somebody should take a look at that, there's some beautiful signs. I'm not sure if you saw them, Lori.
I'm sorry.
Very upsetting.
Yeah.
I think this is, we need this, this is nice.
Yeah.
You mean they have this, these types of signs?
Well, theirs, theirs is green.
I mean, I didn't know if you're letting me bring out that one, you're endorsing.
No, no, they just, they have the general, they have the signage in general, right.
I think that's a, that's, that a compliment is not a lie.
Yeah, and, and we can do it in, we'll do new fixes and part of, yeah, that are, we're involved in that type of.
It's expensive, so, uh. Right, it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to be like a major science thing, eventually, we're going to. All right, so. Want to make a motion to propose the red brick side. Second. All those in favor?
I.
Sounds like you need a roll call.
Yeah.
Roll call vote for the red.
Red.
Jason, no? Yes?
Yes.
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 Now, we could, we could move forward with, uh.
See, I like the.
Well, the red is, uh, a lot of the way red, but I like this one.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, Power Hill Road Repair Project. Uh, motion for a council authorizing engineer sites to prepare specifications and management calls to advertise the same for the Power Hill Road Repair Project. And markets, uh, the D P, uh, no water entering the roadway from the line. Um, it's hard to afford, I have, it's hard for anyone.
Well, there's, um, the maintenance of the roadway is ours right now, and so it's possibly.
They have more than in the future, I mean, we have more water underneath coming in, if there's anybody who's working on.
What are you trying to do?
Work with the underground, so we can have that groundwater, you know, given to the system, so that doesn't.
We didn't have drawl.
Yeah, I would never imagine.
Thanks, and now we have.
Just as common, I think we've got a lot of places in Ridgefield that cry out more for our tax dollars than our water. I don't think that all of a sudden, Power Hill Road come to the top of the list. We've got a whole lot of bridges that we need to fix, and.
It may not get killed over there, it may, it may, it may, we got something to do. It's a building that we had now.
All of these, the maintenance issues are why buildings need air.
Oh, my God, yeah, so we're.
Listen, uh, one, one, one instance that I had was a gentleman that came in to my office, and was upset that just having hit it the wrong way is hard job to be also willing. So, um, you know, anything can happen at any time, but, um, we keep filling it because it keeps sinking, so.
How's the original contract not on the hook for that?
Well, he, because.
He's in the back, and I'm wrong, when you dug out the silver, you fixed it, it's obvious, it's running on per gravel, I'm going to be clear. There was, there was no work done on any sewer there.
Well, it's, it's, it's around manholes in the drain, where the rocks are. We didn't do a good job.
There was no estimation of the red, the proof from that red, maybe there was, there's something, it's not about thirty-six year ago. All right, two thousand and thirteen.
There's a motion. I made a motion to do, we have to get it fixed. Bruce, what's that, Jason, all those in favor?
I, I, unfortunately, I have to stay out of that, it's, it's to be fixed.
Right.
As we've been forwarding, I'd like to see, going back to the contract, because there's a lot of parts that were, that need addressed, and they, that should be the contract.
They're responsible. Uh, New York Street Storm Drain Repair Project. Motion for a council, council authorizing engineer sites to do repair specifications and management calls to advertise the same for New York Street Storm Drain Repair Project. Uh, the line has been clean, and CCTV has changed.
We're changing this, correct? Were you talking about the silver?
Yeah.
And we're going to, um, have, and change, and change the site.
So the motion's to create, to do the specs, come back with the, the, before the. So, motion for a council authorizing engineer sites to prepare specifications. Here, we're covering this here, brace, and the closing, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries. Resolution two zero one five dash four, motion for a council regarding resolution number two zero one five dash four, or resolution authorizing the appropriate borough officials to acquire a property known as four sixteen Power Hill Road for public purposes, uh, to receive a deed and condemnation and pay a reasonable consideration in lieu of just compensation for sale. Make a motion to do that, or that's the resolution, the house next door, correct? Yes, there. Bruce and Jason, all those in favor?
Yeah.
All those opposed, motion carries. Current estimate number one, two thousand and fifteen, one repair project. Motion for a council regarding the new, current estimate number one, two thousand and fifteen, one repair project to slide construction in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-two cents to work completed today. Estimates will be reviewed by sites, engineer sites. So, Bruce and Jason, all those in favor?
Yeah.
All those opposed, motion carries. Billings, motion for a council approving two thousand and fifteen billings. So, Bruce, second, and Nino, all those in favor?
I agree.
All those opposed, motion carries. Favorable, motion for a council approving payroll, uh, June twelfth, nineteen twenty-sixteen, July three, and ten, two thousand and fifteen. So move, Bruce and Jason, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, monthly reports, and motion to accept and pay any commissions due on May two thousand and fifteen real estate tax collector report. So move, Bruce and Jason, all those in favor?
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to accept the fee for two thousand and fifteen financial report.
Second.
And Nino and Neil, all those in favor?
Three.
All those opposed, motion carries, and motion to accept the May two thousand and fifteen. Bruce and Nino, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries. Motion to accept the May two thousand and fifteen zoning report. So Jason and Nino, all those in favor?
Wait.
All those opposed, motion carries. Community reports, administration.
So reports.
Um, reports. Right. Uh, finance.
Thank you, President. Okay, general fund, one million, seventy-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and one cent. Sewer fund, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. Garbage fund, forty-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and eighty-eight cents. Capital improvement, twenty-five thousand, hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-nine cents. Liquid fuel, hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one, and eighty-seven cents. Uh, I have something to add here. On Friday, I spoke to Lori to advise the negotiation committee of the, of the police department. We're going to do our first, uh, run on our negotiation. If Bruce, uh, you'll be back for the end, we're getting everyone there. Uh, second, it's very important, you know, when we talk and run tonight, and this, and the traffic, and this and that. I think it's time, if it's possible, that we get all this agency, governmental agency, such as the county, and, uh, D P, E P, and whatever, all of them, the utility company, and we, we should solve this once forever. Get the fire hall, send everybody nurse, let the county come in, and let, all these things are now, I know this is difficult, but it would be good to do that. Otherwise, things, he's saying, they're saying, they're saying, we know the traffic is bad, and we know the trees are crazy and all that. But so they wait, they hear from the people they know, a lot of people, they doubt us, and we don't do the right job. We just step out and let them address the people who actually got the, the power on all these things. I know it's very hard to do that, I would be so good if you can handle that. If it's not, it's not, but that's my intention, what we need, to get all these people together, you know, and even the desk person opposite mayor, one person, Sophia, and I can discuss all these things. And maybe I'll be the end once forever, for all. I know that's fine, if it is for a day or a, if it's not, that's okay, do it. It's not easy.
Yes, I have to, I have to concur. The more transparency there is, the better we are. The more people hear directly from the engineers, you know, whether it be traffic or flooding, the better we are. And we'll be in duty, these kinds of meetings, in the open, the better it is. So I, I.
Do you think it's possible yet? Yeah, they, Tony, she'll try to get, I know she'll go, the county grown up here, yeah. Yeah, no, it's right, it's somebody else.
You can tell me.
All right. We'll, we'll get to that next year, we'll do. We'll, we'll get to that next year, we'll do a bit of administration this year.
We've got a lot of work to do, you need it. Uh, parks and recreation, Jason.
Oh, art looks great, um, everyone's out there doing summer, the ball, the ball park, soccer fields, the flying balloons.
I'm good. Probably feel shit, I'm good too. Ice fan reason, it's nice, it's melted. Still frozen. Alright, uh, public markets.
Yeah, they're keeping a place twenty, I know that, everything's okay.
That's it? Uh, public safety, Bill isn't on here. Uh, Mr. Mayor. Oh, first item, June fourteenth at seven P M at the Memorial Road will be a presentation in honor of Flag Day. It's relatively short, so it'll be, you can get there in about ten minutes to second, and the ceremony's out for in about fifteen minutes, but it's very nice. And those who might want to attend should think about it on June fourteenth. I met with the executive director, I believe it is, from Charter's Mental Health down on Real Oil Street. Charter's Mental Health has been here for a long time, back into the sixties. What I didn't realize is how big their operation is, how comprehensive their operation is. They have multiple different types of treatment facilities in this area, not all original. Facility Carnegie, another one, uh, believe in yourself, another one outside of Ridgeville. It is a resource for our community. Mental health is an issue. We have people that have mental health issues within our community. If you know of someone that needs their help, I encourage you to reach out to Charter's Mental Health. They have a great staff and there is a resource in our community and it's, just really could be very helpful.
Um, just to clarify it, they're not officials, they're named in Charter's Mental Health, you Charter Center.
Yes.
Because they don't like the statement of.
Thank you, they mentioned that with the new green logo.
Yes.
Charter Center, thank you. Counselor, I have finished that. Uh, Police Chief, Chad.
Thank you, Council President, I don't have much tonight, other than probably later this week or this weekend, we'll be posting every house and every car uh, for the detour routes that we use for Bridgeville Day on the Avenue, since that is two weeks away. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Sister.
Yes, you have my written report, unless you have any further questions. The Republican Council, gentlemen, tonight was their four sixteen on the way, and we are on our, of course, close.
Uh, Engineer Joe Sykes, thank you, Mr. President, you're welcome. Just not all the others here on the, uh, engineer report, I didn't. Sweet, uh, I'll touch upon a couple already, I'm on the line, but, uh, I want the DPA to remind that, uh, we look at the opening, the possible opening source of water near the Memorial Road. Uh, there's no more person than time during our investigation, and they moved and says the line was higher than the road, that they could not be a source of it. But, one thing, uh, that's there is a concern about the opening of the line, uh, and closing it. Uh, they mentioned that there's two ways that the closure can be done, the borough could, uh, secure property, petition the Bureau of Abandon Line Reclamation to put the closure. And, uh, which that'll take about a year or how the, uh, how the State Bureau of Abandon Mine Reclamation, uh, take the lead with it, uh, condemn the property and, uh, do all the legal maneuvers that need to be necessary, that'll also take a year or so. I recommend that the borough have the Bureau of Abandon Line Reclamation, uh, be requested to form the closure through the legal process. So the borough should have to, 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 to make a motion on that.
How would you read it?
Motion for the borough to petition the Bureau of Abandon Line Reclamation to, uh, close the entrance to the Memorial Road.
Make a motion, Bruce.
Second.
Nino. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Um, we can talk about the New York sewer, we'll be working on that, and, uh, waiting for the contractor to get started on the evening work.
Uh, Joe, you, uh, you're well known, we all know that, you've been doing a lot of work from Bridgeville to the Quintry here. It's a, it's a class emergency, I don't think we have many emergencies so far. And, just because I see we have four hundred eighty seven thousand dollar sewer fund.
Actually, that's done, you know, we just spent a hundred ninety eight thousand dollars in, uh, on this, uh, stop size, uh, the other day.
Okay.
So, a hundred ninety eight thousand almost went to the.
So it's three hundred. Uh, thirty five dollars. I just want. I just want to tell, discuss. If you think we have, we are healthy, on sewer fund, we are, we are not. Can I want to mention that? Because, who knows, in, on budget, mean, on budget, what's gonna happen? We need to stop the engineer to do all of this work, there's a lot work to be done, it's covered, there will be a lateral. We have a lot of work behind us, on, on infiltration, on sewer, on repairs. We have a lot of work behind us. We must be sure, we're what they do, all the money stops up the work, sooner or later, it's gonna catch up on us. No, definitely, not at all. When, when this beginning, as you, as some of the young council people don't know, that who has Pleasant Hill, uh, they renounce on the, uh, on, one of the municipalities. There are one joy in the, the sewer, they actually would put council in jail, because this is federal. You get, they use ours as a puppet, that they're gonna do it anyway, regardless of what, so. Remember, guys, that our sewer fund is law. No question about it, keep that in your mind, it's all right.
Thank you, Nino.
Sure.
Uh, Fire Chief Bill Trillion, he is absent, he is final inspection of the fire truck. Uh, South Clear G M S, the van is not here. Uh, library is, he is not here.
What?
Oh, she.
Here.
Sounds, yeah, yeah, I mean, I just, I heard a moment, I haven't. Uh, Broom Andrew, what are you thinking?
Um, I, I'm not sensible, but you have any questions? The one thing that I hope to want to reiterate on this interview is, and it says, good news, question of the day, so. It was in the Tribune Review, and it was a letter from Tim Kiggins from Sanford, North Carolina. Says, the first Nelson woman, my wife and I made an annual trip to Bridgeville for the last few years to honor. My wife and I have made an annual trip to Bridgeville for the last few years to honor the tree yard in Hero Memorial Day. And, uh, and goes, the last surviving member of my father's, the E twenty four crew of World War Two. And most surprised and pleased, though, that Bridgeville has chosen to honor Ed and the other veterans of the Bridgeville Sports Campaign. Plies along the streets with the photos of the champion are overwhelming and reminding us of the dedication, resolve, and commitment of an entire generation here, and is thanking for recognizing her service. And I think we have almost up to three hundred.
Okay, I'm over three hundred, about, three hundred and twenty twelve.
Well, I was just on my way down, and there was a guy standing there, he had this, signed his old A V outfit, you know, and this is a bench, we'll take his picture, that's pretty cool, guys.
This is gonna be wonderful, we're just saying, everybody, come.
Thank you.
Oh, I should, uh, I should, uh, remind everyone that, uh, Indian Day is June twentieth, Indian eleven, and then at seven o'clock, so. And then, and then, and then, okay. Well, sure, be in touch with you, she's got you.
I actually have it, please, I'll leave that somewhere in the floor.
Yeah, oh, I have a little bit, I'll just.
See you later. Um, full business. So this one, I'm full business, so, I was gonna try and run up the issue of urban laterals in sewage. And I will say it again, Mr. Sykes, laterals make up what, half of the infiltration. In infiltration.
If you look at, look at the right wing pack, laterals are twice as many leopards, than laterals are ninety eight, than there is right now.
Yep, so twice as many leopards, um, the lau, the lau, the piece of plant that goes from your house to the sewer. We need to address this, as a community and as a region. There are opportune times for our residents to fix their leaky lau, if only they knew that it was important to do so. That's why I'm making a statement now, because there are a number of residents in the audience. Alcassen and the EPA consent decree has clearly changed course. The idea that they were gonna take all the sewage and spend billions of dollars to take everything that came down that line is no longer the case. My statement.
You're correct.
Okay?
No, it's, uh, and, and some flow reduction.
Flow reduction model, which makes a whole lot of sense, why treat clean water? We, as a, as a community, can lead in that effort. And we again request that we look for a comprehensive, reliable pro, program that we can implement, that will benefit our residents and our region, and reduce the cost.
And I think every resident should start to think about, do a, uh, a camera man who, hey, we need to film, if you ever do it yourself, we must, we must have the films here. And the, we, we can, we can say that to them.
It's great, but we have no process.
Wait, but this is, I'm telling voluntary, man.
Yes.
You know, a volunteer base, I mean, with you guys, uh, you should.
I'm pretty much untrustworthy, I'm on the group. It would be nice to know, who do you go to?
Well, we can get down, we can give you a number of names, Allevina County, you know, Bridgeville.
How do you find your former, that's, how do you?
You know, it's working well, because, as I said, we're gonna be here to just like a stretch, and, and we have no choice.
Awesome, I'll be glad to have you to get something together.
Sure, it, it only will help you, it will help us, I gotta do it, everybody gotta do it.
Yeah, Joe, I guess, yeah, you have to, you have to, we have to.
Sure. Oh, no, we.
Well, my understanding was, and right now, I'm, I'm saying there's a different program, so I thought that was a way to, to put the finance, maybe, or what can I, or whatever.
Can you explain, in, in.
Well, we're just definitely not, there's indication, among other things, kind of lateral testing.
Like, I flush the toilet, you guys down, that's right. Thank you, thank you.
May I? Let me sort of respond to that in layman's terms, I'm sure we'll take advantage of the technical terms. This isn't about your shower or your toilet. Hey, if you don't take a shower, if you don't ever flush the toilet, water leaks into your broken pipe that goes from your house to the main sewer line. So if you don't take a shower, there's still water circulating in to your broken line. That water contributes to a lot of the, of the, of the, uh, the volume that we're treating at the sewage pipe.
I think one of the.
So what we want you to do is camera your line, and prove that it doesn't have any leaks, and bring that videotape to the borough. Okay, and if it does have leaks, yes, we want you, when it's convenient, to dig up your line and fix it.
The beginning of the, the other communities have started, is, is what you sell your house.
That's, yeah.
The source of the, the.
Yeah, the active. One of the options that's available is what they call it. A test on sale, like the dive test. But, I personally. South Bay does that, if you're gonna, if you're gonna sell your house in South Bay, you have to have a tested camera and fix before you sell it. Personally, I think that's the most inconvenient time to deal with it. You're trying to sell your house and know, but it's also the time where the liability is going from one owner to another, so I understand why that's a method. I think we can come up with a better method, when it's more convenient for our residents, especially, it doesn't address low turnover homes. Because some people in this community have lived in their house for a lot of years.
You're never gonna get them volunteer.
And.
What's the same?
One was saving, one was saving, was. Lowered up.
And was the, was the.
There has been, on a system-wide basis, there have been some, not scientists, but I have appropriated, I believe that there are, right, just layman's terms, boys. And I'll just say, we treat it, obviously, at about three hundred million gallons of water a day, two hundred, three hundred shouldn't be there. Between our private laterals and the public line, the public lines that we're all talking about here, that we need to fix that are leaking, we have infiltration in our public lines. That's why we're being ordered to fix those. There are some estimates that between forty and sixty percent, we could line all our public lines in gold, okay, seal them all, but we only fixed maybe forty to sixty percent of the problem because of the private line. It's what we're looking at when we take back the committee, and it's been known, different, most different communities, we don't need to read that.
Yeah.
But there are different laws, obviously, everybody's community, the dive test, that's your point of sale.
So it's a quarter back, is it hundreds of thousands, millions?
I don't know, but the second, the second type of program, if I can finish, is where you do a combination, because you have a point of sale, or there are also, where they do systematically picking zones in the community from high priority to low, which I think the scientists will do. And over time, maybe it's a three-year program, maybe it's a four-year program, we cycle around different areas of your community, and you target them for the testing, and then the rehabilitation. While you enact these orders, they're not all having a leisure, and they're not all that. Um, you know, your leisure, once, once you test and you kick in these programs, I mean, um, kicking at some time where you have to remedy, but that's been found, if you do something other than a point of sale. A lot comes out of mind, too, the, the technology is, is good over the past ten years, where, if you live on a street where you have challenging terrain, and you have a, you know, not so deep, and they can line them, just like we're lining our public flats. Problem comes in, you're, you got many, here we got one, that's a problem, you have a bad, it's fifteen twenty three ton, and the area has been under, and it's nineteen forty two, and it was the cell, and all these been spent by, in the green, to fix the latter. So that is not all that easy, and some of these create complex situations, some of, I think where we're at right now is comprised of different types of orders to take them back, and we're like, maybe they kind of, maybe they come after.
Yeah, thanks, I hope we can, I hope we all, you know, get clicks, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's a large cost to each of us once. But it's a savings, as long as that lot was good, to Alcassen for a very long time. So if they can kick some back, if we can get a subsidy in the house, then, well, it makes, it puts, it makes it a homicide, like.
I don't.
Are you asking Alcassen to help pay the, or the line of our private laterals?
People be costing, who's paying for the two hundred billion gallons that shouldn't be costing?
We are, you are.
Well, exactly, then we have a direct, uh, there's a value to us, to pay once to stop that for many, many years, right?
There is, because it's all about the legal issue, now, is the legal history of how we built the, for lack of a better word. And we built the road under legal scenario, where we cut off ownership that become, when we're speaking, and it's private ownership from there. Yeah, if that were broken, we'd be able to spend a ton of funds on that road. And there may be things that come to us, and there may be ways that we can help.
Since we're all.
Got, for everybody else's project. We actually don't have the power to spend public money on laterals, like you said. Because that's private, and that is a vestige of public creative, honestly, that's, that's.
Can I get a tax coupon or something, like what can we do on the other end? Can I get a tax coupon or something, like, what can we do on the other end?
If I can, I'm gonna say.
Cumulative, you owe, 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 you owe. What she's asking, like, question, if she fixes her lares, can she have a credit on her sewage rate or a lower charge, maybe not pay the, not pay the, uh, the, the, the monthly thing, maybe just take her gallons.
Something less.
That's actually something that we are talking about, we think, uh, what, what operate, uh, just, just, actually, it's not the scenario, it's more like, right, the arcane system, it's, 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 it's. Those are the kind of ideas I'm trying, I'm hoping, that we can address and figure out a solution to, something, because, because you are looking, the EPA consent decree, Joe, what was the total that the, you finally said, no, you don't have to pay, or, or, million? Three billion dollars. To, the old nephew's takeoff, offload, three billion dollars, we all gonna pay to fix. Use the flow, the source, I think we can do something with credits, with some, with something in this process, so that's what I'm hoping to look at, and if the manager's there, she's willing to look at it, I'm hoping we can.
This is very good education for you people.
But we're not gonna go along, you know?
We're not gonna go along, it's gonna be hard at this, hopefully, there'll be some political.
I think, I think, well, something, at least, you're explaining, but I, we need to come up with, um, just to explain, like Eric said, I flushed my clothing, and, uh, my knowledge of plumbing, my, I come up and explain, hey, you gotta be sure, why, what are lares, what does it do, why does that get a challenge, so we come up with something, so people are more, are, you know.
Maybe we just come up with an educational panel.
Better off, while they're out here, you know, whatever, you know, I, I mean, we don't need to create these, they go six, they go seven, yeah, for the past ten years. All right, new business, new business.
We're gonna do a jury.